All right, welcome everybody. Good to see you all on this beautiful Thursday meeting. Let's do a quick roll call. Justin?
Here.
Kathleen?
Here.
Mike Barber?
Here.
Barb?
Here.
Tim's not here. Michelle?
Here.
And Steve Popowski were here. So we've got our roll call. Let's do our pledge allegiance. All right. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you guys. All right. First order is to approve our minutes from the June 27 meeting. Hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a peek at it.
I'll second.
All right.
There's a correction.
Go ahead.
Item two, the term of the period was closed before August.
Oh, yep.
Nice, yes.
Actually, that would have been opened at, yep, should have been 3:00.
All right.
Do you accept the amendment or the change?
All in favor say aye. Aye opposed, and we're good to go. All right.
Was Michelle and Barb?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. So then, our purpose here today is take a look at the strategic plan and then the economic development implementation plan. It's my understanding we can't tweak with it. All we're doing is voting on yes, send it like this, okay? Or send it like this with no changes. Or...
Did we miss citizen comments?
That's in the comments.
Always. Citizen comments, just for the record.
All you proud citizens who would like to make comments, thank you.
Franklin, if you don't do it, someone's gonna see you didn't offer some.
Thank you. Okay, anyway, anybody? We have no one here, so I guess we can close that, huh? Thank you, Michael. All right. So then, the options as I understand it, if you will, we have the strategic plan, which was not modified as best I can tell from the last time that we rejected it and consented it.
No, this has, this has this in it. This has the economic development implementation plan strategies in it. I split it out so you can take a look at them, so we don't get lost in it.
Okay?
So we can, we can do this plan without this, we can do it with this, or we can edit the plan at the next meeting and put that in there.
Okay.
So for some reason, this has everything in it, has everything in it. We can, we can approve that without the implementation plan, we can approve it with the implementation plan as is, or we can revise the implementation plan. So that was, that was where our discussion left us last week.
John, I'm looking at implementation strategies. I'm looking at, I mean, so I see the goal one, two, and three, but I don't see here, I don't see this. I don't see this, I don't see this.
So within the larger document, page 13, isn't it, unfortunately, all of these are in page 13?
Maybe.
So it would be 14, 14, 15, and 16 would be added.
Only the first page of this is in.
Yeah, only one page.
But it's the same, it's the same as page 13.
All right, well, then you're right. This is, this is as it first came to us. And it wasn't supposed to work out that way. That's, that's the way it was when it first came to us. And this is the implementation.
Okay, so...
Yep.
The front part is not different than the time she submitted it the first time, right?
No.
Right, so we had no changes, though we said we needed some changes to her original stuff. Okay, got it?
Well, I think we may have made those changes, some of the minor changes, we just didn't, we just don't have this.
Okay.
You got Kathy's in that?
Pardon? No, you got all the information.
No, I think we're good.
You got, you got all the information.
I think we're fine.
So, you're right.
Okay, so we have to, you know, add the implementation, 'cause it's not full without it.
So this would be inserted at page 13.
Right.
13 and 13 are the same. After 13 on this, you go to 14, 15.
Yeah.
Correct.
Correct. Got you. Okay, so...
So let me, let me have these back. I don't want to confuse you around this thing.
I don't have any.
No, no, that one's pretty good. At least it's got its stuff sort of there.
It's got everything, should have everything.
Yeah, I think it does.
Okay, I didn't have this extra. Oh, okay. That makes sense.
Okay, great, yeah. So we can...
Well, okay, so what Maggie's doing.
Yep. This is good. So you can, you can adopt this as it, as it was. You can adopt this, which was the original report plan, and I think we made some minor tweaks in it. So that's, that's what CB2 delivered to us originally. You can adopt it with this inserted, with this included. Or you can go with revising this, if we haven't had a chance to go through and revise it, and then insert it.
Okay. Well, let's go back if you don't mind. I'd like y'all to look at page 12 on the original one. Okay? Page 12 does need to be revised. There are no numbers, there are no dates. If we want to use them as placeholders, so if you look in key outcome indicator, it has number of recommendations developed. If we just need to throw something in there, put a 10 for everything and put our closed date of 12/31/25, and increase of 10%, I'm just looking at face, you know, I'm not going to be any smarter now than I am going to be in August. But I'd like to move this ahead, so that those who look at it and say, hey, you know, it's not possible to decrease development by 10%. 10% increase of use, 10% decrease in input development time, but there needs to be numbers, otherwise this is not a complete document. So something needs to be done there. I'm going to throw out there for the team, and we're not judging this now, but come back with some thoughts, so that we can fix this one to begin with.
You're talking about the target column?
Uh, no, I'm talking, well, yeah, no, the key outcome and target. So the target to me would be dates. I, you know, I'm saying for simplicity of the moment, you know, I mean, like, for instance, some of these materials available by 4/25, well, that's past, guys. And then schedule per month starting 6/1/25, they're gone. So I'm suggesting modifying all those to 12/31/25, at least we get a document complete. In any place there is a number recommended developed, I'd put a 10 in for the moment as a placeholder. And as a percent decrease, I'd still use 10, or increase, or something. We ought to have placeholders, otherwise it's not a complete document.
Can you also explain to me under target, goal one, recommendation of appropriate housing incentives?
I don't know. I didn't really think this was a...
We're not bringing in any role.
Yeah. And you know what? Part of that would be in the final edit with the council to take it out.
Which item was this?
Under the category of target.
Target number two, 2.2, recommendation of appropriate housing incentives developed by 12/31/25. But an appropriate one, Michelle could be do nothing.
Because a residence.
Okay, so either way, either way, we need some modifications, guys. My recommendation. And we're not voting on that today. We're just voting, do we need to do some modifications before we submit it going forward? So I'm saying, out of the box, yes, we have to. If that's not, then the other question is then, as it relates to the development plan implementation, I believe there needs to be some. I sent to everyone, right, submitted ones, which she took quite a bit of, but she missed a few things, like vision and mission, references to the fact that when we started talking about key areas that we should be looking at, I had in there the rock a couple times, which was very simple. We've got a big substantial commitment to them, $27 million, by its importance, so we ought to somehow include it and recognize it as part of it. And then, the very end of this one, timing, which I thought this was just a throwaway, specific performance targets have been identified in the strategic goal table. Okay, then don't bother putting it in, or put in some real ones, which I had done in my original version, adding 2025, 26, 27, and timing associated with it. So again, that should, either that or take it out, I think it should be in there. Those are some things that I think need to be added, for this to be a document that we could send to the common council. My recommendation, let's do some modifications before we send.
On page three, back then she was here, or that John Lindick, I asked that we don't use an ugly picture of a water tower? And that's back then.
Well, I haven't changed it since then.
Oh, okay.
I haven't, I haven't got that.
Would that be a good area, and we don't really need a water tower. Would that be a good area to insert right there in that little corner, picture of the rock?
Well, no, no.
I talked to the mayor about this.
I know, there were some specific things that, you know, identified originally, and I'm going to submit them, I'll send it to John to board out, or I can send it, whichever case, so that you guys get a chance to see where it was included and if you think it's appropriate.
Well, I think what we need to do is, we're going to decide to revise documents.
Yeah.
You know, we need to revise them and be prepared at our next meeting. And when we can have that facilitated, if we want, because we have one more meeting coming to us from CB2. So that's, that's one of the items. Decide which you're going to go with. Revise, revise, go with this, revise it, or go with that with the implementation.
We may have that next meeting with CB2, we may make sure that you... You can give her my objection.
Yeah. I don't need her. I don't think she has a lot of value. So I'd rather have her without her.
I personally don't either. I think any one of us is usually a job, but if there's anything that you want to...
Well, I'd say it's, you know, are you talking about at the last meeting, or about the whole process?
Like, the whole process, and the last meeting I kind of, even though maybe I'm not on the stage to put on some of this, I did put that.
Yeah, I think, but I think we can get through this, guys. I don't think it's that huge, you know? I want to quote John, quote me, would say, "It's easier to edit than to create." We've got enough here that you guys, we...
Yeah.
I mean, I think we should be able to patch it together and move it ahead.
So...
I would think that would take us another, another meeting, John. I think you say, next meeting, if everybody came prepared with their comments question, we can do it. That would be my recommendation, because to stall it two more meetings out of one.
So we can get a tack, we just have to decide what we're doing with the implementation.
Yeah, well, but this also needs to be revised.
Yes, it does.
So revision is, is yes, and I'm going to suggest, then everything's open for revision.
And I'm going to recommend...
But you're, you're suggesting that this be in.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we paid her to do, is to revise and then...
But that's not the question on the table. The question is, in, out, revised, out.
I don't even know why it's a question, because she was asked to come back and revise.
No, that was, that was the discussion that this group had, and that she, they went into after she gave her suggestion, which were pretty close, except for minor variables. So, again, we're at the discussion, if you look at the minutes, where the discussion ended was, was this decision.
Okay. So my recommendation to the team is that we revise it, both front and implementation as a package that we can send forward. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. And I also add there, can this go in front of mayor, or there's two Johns, I'll give you the copy, because learning from that horrible... I didn't see it till after. Mayor didn't see it. Anything that goes out, like, should go to the mayor's input edits, fix anything that matters, that was the mayor, and if the common council has any idea, I want...
Aren't we presenting it to the council once we're done with it?
Right.
That's the next step.
But he may have some...
I'm good with that. I mean, if we can move it further ahead faster...
Right, I think that would be faster.
Yeah, I do too.
I think we have a few, I discuss them, and then you have these changes, and most changes will be done, and then hopefully by the time it gets to council, we have a good chance of passing, then it can be back again, back here, lady mouth.
I'm good with that. You got it?
If that's, we get it, whatever we get done, sure.
Yeah, well, absolutely. Okay. So we had, are we ready for a vote?
I'm not sure what we're voting on, to be honest with you. We need some discussion.
Okay. So the discussion is, and I'm going to recommend the total package that was submitted, revise it, and then be able to submit one big, beautiful package.
And the revisions being the targets?
Everything. The targets in the first part, but in the back needs to be revised too. That wasn't done. Yeah, so this timeline and stuff needs revision too. So it's, let's just revise it, give us our best revision and move forward. I don't think it's that, that much we can get this done within a short period of time.
I guess maybe what I personally don't understand, so this is the input from residents and also back to...
It was input from surveys and focus groups, and a retreat, all of which I don't think any of us in this room could have done.
Yeah, like page 10, I don't like the verbiage.
That's a SWOT analysis.
That was one of the focus groups.
That's one of their standard items. That's, that's common.
Yeah, I don't, I...
It's an industry.
The parts that need, Michelle, rework on this one is page 12.
You just need dates in there.
Dates and percentages, and then it's, you know, at least...
And those, and those were ours to work out, and like I said, she was willing to facilitate that process.
So...
And I guess I'll just say it, because I'm not understanding this, so I'll throw that out there, but when this goes out to people, they're not going to... Do what the take back...
No, that's, that's what the, that's what the table is about. These are, these are, these are action items.
Okay.
They just need some dates put to them.
Right.
And we got this like in February, was it?
February.
And a lack of this whole thing a little bit late.
No, I, I get it.
So this part though, Michelle, this is the back end of it, basically is the next step, you know, insofar as all one, two, three, and, and those aspects of, we need to revise that a little bit, get our timing set, and then I think we can go. I mean, I don't think it's forever.
My only thought is with the targets, some of that language could be cleaned up, that more say what we are doing. Someone reading a recommendations for appropriate industrial incentives, what, what are we trying to do with the incentives?
What we're trying to decide is what we should be offering. That's...
Yeah, but what is the goal of the incentive is?
Industrial incentives are to attract industry.
Well, that, that's what I mean, somehow make that a little softer in terms of language, so it's more, someone reading that knows exactly what we're talking about.
You could say industrial attractions would be part of the revision that we'd want to do, we can go through it at the next meeting.
I'm not saying it, it has to be.
No.
No, no, but I, I agree, but I invite everybody to come back with all your scratches and edits, and, you know, if there, if somebody has something, say, hey, that's better, yeah, boom, let's do it. So that would be the interactive portion where we could all add to it.
Keep in mind, this is a roadmap, not a pat on the back, like, what we want to do.
Right.
Right, correct. And that's why I said some of these days, like in 6/1 of 2025, or, you know, four or five of, they're gone. So that's why I'm saying, in all of those instances, I, in my version, coming back to you guys, I'll have dates in there, and they're going to be either a 10, 10, or as in a percent, or it's going to have 12/31 of 25. And if somebody has a better number, then they can do that and revise it, fix it.
That's, those numbers and dates that are missing is what I was expecting. Oh, I, I, if we just, and it's fine, it's a great number, but if we put in 10, and then it's absolutely feasible.
Well, but that's where, going through committee, I'm counting on the fact that we've had the very smart people in there and saying, hey, that's not reasonable, fix it, and then they'll, they'll make it to the next level. Because I don't, I mean, we can sit here, I don't know anybody in here, maybe, I mean, maybe John can, he could be putting in dates and stuff, but I'm not going to get any smarter between now and next Aug, in, in August, guys, as to a better number. I'm just throwing it out there for whoever can make it better, that come on back to the meeting and make it better, more accurate. That's all I'm suggesting. I mean, it's a placeholder, we get to moving. Okay, so that would be the, the whole concept there.
I have a question, I'm just looking at some of these targets here, and it seems to me that so much of that is already being done. Is that correct? In terms of incentives for industries and...
We, we don't have, we don't have limits or, or targeted amounts of incentive for industry. For instance, we don't have a document that says, you know, this, you know, industry receives up to 75% maximum of taxes. Housing receives up to 50% taxes. Right out, it's negotiated. And so there's, there's a lot of, lot of room for interpretation. And so, passed on us once before, and so, didn't feel like we should do that, didn't think we could tackle it, but maybe with the finance, we do have to. But, like I said, there's, there's, there's no, there's no document, application document that, that says, or limits that say, you know, this, this is the maximum amount that can be received. No, other communities have done it on the dollar value per square foot basis. They reach that threshold, they can receive this much.
To clarify this, we're not looking to do that in the documents, healthcare gets a 75%, we're more looking to say, this should be done, we should come up with this.
We should, we should come up with them, that's the plan, is...
Right.
We're planning to, planning to develop these items.
So is the only one at the table with actual experiences, do you think that's a beneficial path of limits, or does our negotiation process work out?
Those are guidelines. Yeah, it is beneficial to that.
And, and, and also putting them out there, say, this is our guideline, and if we hit it, we're doing right, if we're not, well, okay. And then you tweak them, to get them better, but you got to take them against them, is the reason for it.
Completely outside, okay, and I feel like if I, I owe somebody this, and I know, having to go to Franklin, I guess 75% tax credit, that's appealing to me, but if I could have possibly raised something, would be a little hard with...
You have, you always have the...
But it's just a guideline, it's not a...
You have, you have the out, you have an exception. After the council passes these kinds of guidelines, there's always the opportunity to have an exception with the council. So they can, they can do that. Again, sometimes having different approach to industrial development or, and commercial development being per square foot value equaling certain thresholds. Have, the more fine tune you can make it to specific. Again, if there's something that's really out of this world that we want to throw to the kitchen sink, yes, that the council will have the option to have an exception.
If we added the word guidelines after first two bullet points there, after the word incentive, that help clarify what we're doing here?
Well, I think what we're doing now is editing, that's, we agreed, we're not going to do that today, we're going to do that in coming back August. So the question is, are we in agreement that we need to do edits to the big package before sending it forward, or do you guys just want to send?
Well, and the small package.
And the small.
And, and, and we include the small. That was, that was where the discussion...
She submitted this, though, as part of this.
She submitted it as part of it, the draft, and, and the discussion was, we include it and approve it that way, do we not include it and approve it that way, do we edit the implementation strategy addition part, and then...
So, this one was voted and said was not good enough the way it was, and that's why we spent an extra $4,800 to fix it. The fix is this, and we're saying neither are complete, so my recommendation is that we fix it in one piece, and with that, do the edits necessary in our August meeting. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Don't pass it. Done. All right.
So we can adjourn this point?
What is the next?
But, 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 but please, I mean, edit, edit. So when we come together next time, so if you're, well, I think that's the day after.
What is the next meeting?
August 22nd. Now, this is what we've set up for, since they are going to edit, this is your suggested for their reference, they can look at this.
Yes, please.
And this, this is what the chairman put together, and since you're, you decided to edit.
Already did some edits.
Thank you.
She did, that's, that's his input.
August at 3:00 PM?
You had it already, right?
Is it the 22nd at 3:00 PM?
Yes, that would be...
So, so then, that said, folks, take and edit, if you will, to this, if you're okay with this, then I'm okay with the back end, the only thing I need in the front end is numbers and percentages.
This, again, you...
Yes, but, but it's...
You need to come up with your own edits.
Absolutely.
If you want to look at it.
Are there any other commissions or committees you can recommend that I can look at?
I can, I can send you a bunch of, yeah, we've, when we talked about this before, I pulled together a bunch of different programs.
And, and one of those that I also sent was the Green Bay one, but it's much more expansive.
Yeah, they spent a lot of money.
Yeah, so this is kind of a nice consolidated.
Okay, are you talking about incentives, or are you talking about strategic?
Both, actually, because if we're looking at any more specific incentives, or give me kind of idea of what we should do.
Okay, so I'll, I'll send you the incentives.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Did we, I'm sorry, on the agenda it says next meeting.
I think we just said August 22nd. I thought...
It's August 22nd at 3:00.
Your mind's, I don't want to do that to you.
And that's what works the time?
That's the, the...
On my Friday.
Fourth Friday.
3:00 PM in the middle of the day, Friday.
We usually meet on the third Friday, right?
Yeah.
That's the 15th? So, I'm scheduling right now from one to four, which is, the twenty-second works for me. Twenty-second works for people I'm in.
So, what'd you say, the twenty-fourth or what?
No, the twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Was, um, which was recommended, and I, yes, I'm in.
You're ready?
You good?
Yeah.
Okay. As of now, August twenty-second, three P M. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it, and...
Did we have a second to adjourn?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we didn't know. All right.
Signing the motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Done, we're good to go.